Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Buchanan zoning board meeting for August 2020. And this is obviously all new to us, basically doing Zoom for the first time. So I would like patience, everybody bear with each other as we go through this. Um, we're going to start with the pledge to the flag. So, um, take, take a second. If you can stand, go ahead. If you can't, I understand.
I, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, the second thing on our, our, our agenda today is the approval of minutes from November 13th, 2019. Um, speaking for myself, I had trouble locating them today. So I'm, I'm not sure what they are. Do the other members have, have those minutes?
No, I didn't, but we approved the November minutes back in December. So we should be approving the December minutes.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I don't have them either. I don't know if anybody else does.
All right, well, how about this? Rosemary, um, will you check that out? And for next month, ha- have the, uh, December meeting minutes, uh, ready? And if the November minutes were already done, then we don't have to worry about it, okay?
Gary, I don't believe we had a meeting in December. It was Casabella.
We did.
Did? I have an agenda, but I don't have minutes.
Well, 12/11, we did have a meeting.
Okay.
And basically what had happened, there was a question whether or not he were going to withdraw the application, which they did. So that's why we never had the meeting. I'm just looking at my notes.
That's right. You withdrew the application. Casabella, right?
Right.
Yes.
So we did not have a meeting.
No, we did. We were present. We just had a discussion.
Okay.
We had a discussion. We asked about a journey for a public hearing, but I believe also at the time we, we indicated that if he was going to withdraw, then obviously we wouldn't have a need for, for the, uh, public meeting, and he did, he withdrew.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, you square, Rosemary?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Tonight, under new business, we have had two applications on the agenda, but the second one, uh, Kevin Ashram has decided not to participate tonight. So we're going to go with the first one. Um, it's catalog number 1-20BZ, and it's an interpretation of the zoning local law or zoning map for property located at 225 Travis Avenue. It says Bernard Calabro, but I think that's wrong. It's Brian, isn't it?
That is correct. Brian Calabro. And it's, and it's 226, um, Travis Avenue.
Uh, just for the record, whoever's, um, whoever's representative speaking, please say your name. Uh, but the meetings have to be transcribed and the people's names have to be identified as part of the minutes.
Yes, good evening. Good, uh, good evening to all. David Garcia, 2117 Crampon Road, Corleman, New York, or for Mr. Brian Calabro.
Thank you. And I asked, I see that Brian is on the line too, as a line as well, just to let everybody know.
Uh, yes, Mr. Calabro is actually with me. He's right, he's right here with me.
Oh, okay.
How you doing?
Yeah, how you doing? All right, Chairman, so I, if you want me, I could, I could put the, uh, application on the screen so everybody can see it if you wish, or you want to have a discussion first, whatever you like, Chairman.
Well, I would like the, uh, the applicant to try to describe for us what he's interested in doing there.
Well, um, uh, in a nutshell, what we're asking for is, uh, an interpretation of the zoning law with respect to, uh, 226 Travis Avenue with respect to the setback. And it turns out that, that we provided a, um, a survey that was, that was performed on the property, and we've measured out the actual, um, not just the boundary lines, but where the actual, how the property runs. And, um, in this particular instance, if, if the members can see where the proposed, um, extension of the house is going to be, it actually goes back 30 feet from the, correct, 30 feet from the street, which is where the, the street line is. But the, it, it, but because of, or but for how the lines are drawn, it's actually, i- it's drawn 15 feet, but there's actually 30 feet there, uh, to the beginning of, um, this, the structure that, the proposed structure. So we, we've asked the, the board to, uh, review this, and, um, after speaking with the, the attorney, um, it was my, it was my hope that we can get, uh, the, 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 the zoning board to reinterpret, uh, for 226.
Okay. In, in the last couple of years, uh, Brian, uh, Brian Calabro's been in front of us twice. Once was for a variance for the front steps and so forth, landing to come out to the road. And, uh, if I recall right, it was something like, uh, 26 feet to zero or something like that. I, I forget the exact numbers, and I don't have it in front of me. And the other time he was before us, he was asking for basically something similar to this, that, uh, you're providing tonight. And at that time I had, we had told them that, uh, he needed, it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and to add on to it, the only way you could do it is if you went up, you gotta stay in the footprint of the building. So I don't know what makes this different, uh, from, from them, but, uh...
Well, i- if I may, I think the issue really is, you know, the, the, this, you know, th- there is the setback, but because of the way the property, the line, the property lines were actually drawn, and because of how the street actually runs, um, there's actually more, there's, there's plenty of room inside there. Um, there, there's sufficient room in, uh, in terms of, uh, from where the pro- where the proposed, um, extension is sought, is sought to be, uh, placed. Um, so I don't know what discussions were had on the prior applications, but when I looked at this, and, um, you know, when I spoke with, uh, the, the attorney, uh, Ms. Portius, you know, when I pointed out that because of the way the street runs, there's actually, there is a full 30 feet there. And so, um, you know, to the, to the extent that with respect to this particular piece of property, you know, th- there's, there's plenty of room. So I don't understand, I, I guess the question is, what I'm asking for is for the, for the board to look at it in that sense, that not just from where the lines run, but how this, how the property interacts with the street itself.
Well, uh, I'm not going to argue that point with you at all, or I, I believe there's plenty of room there, especially looking at the, uh, at the, the tax map here. But, um, the, the real question is, this house is, is before zoning. And, uh, in the village code, have you researched that at all?
Yes, I did. And that's why we, and that's why, um, it was decided, or at least, that's why I felt that possibly an interpretation may have been the, is the, the easier way or the easier route to address the issue.
Hey, Gary, it's Stephanie. Can I speak for a sec?
Sure, yes.
Okay, 'cause I think, I think what, um, council is trying to say is that they understood they couldn't get a variance because it's a pre-existing non-conforming. And I think they're just, what they're asking for is you to interpret maybe the intent of the 30-foot setback, and what that might be in a unique property where there's 30 feet. I think, um, the building inspector also told me there's another property that's like 17 feet, and so I think the way this was drawn, it, it, you can interpret if you choose to do that, um, you don't have to interpret it if you don't. But I think it's just, I think that's the reason why they're in for an interpretation rather than a variance. They can't get a variance, and they know that. But yet there is 30 feet from a road, and so if you were to say, well, why would, why would a village or a municipality, you know, put the setback at 30 feet? Well, they don't want people on top of the road, the sidewalk. So I think that that's what the request is here.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So I, this is Marco Pinkley speaking. What is that? What makes up the additional 30 feet there? What's the extra 15 feet?
An easement.
And whose easement is that?
Uh, it's the village's easement. This is Anthony Conti, the building inspector.
What kind of easement is it? Do you know? Sorry, it's Stephanie. Anthony, what kind of easement is it? Just to reg-
It's, the, the language on the easement is for a maintenance easement. Snow removal, you t- should utilities ever need to be there, power lines, things like that.
Uh, and including sidewalks too, I would assume. There's no sidewalks in that area, correct?
No, there is no sidewalks.
Yeah, so that easement will be for possible sidewalks in the future too, all widening the road if necessary.
Okay, so you bring up a good point. So widening the road to take away that 30 feet?
Again?
If the road was widened, that 30 feet would come down. It would, it would bring the road closer to the house.
Well, yeah, but again, this is a, a, a small street, and I can't, you know, when you look at the character of the street, you wouldn't change the character, I mean, to, to widen the street. There's not, there is, right now at least, I mean, there, there's, there would be no reason to widen the street, given how short it is. It's on a curve. There are four houses, or five houses on this particular strip of, of road, and then it, it turns to the, to the right, I think, doesn't it? And then it turns to the right. So I can't, and, and so in order, it just isn't, it doesn't seem feasible that at this particular juncture, at this particular point, there would be, uh, you know, an, an expansion of the road.
Can I make a clarification point? Anthony, again, from the building inspector. So if the road was widened, then the other two or three houses that are on the same exact street that already have variances to be 17.5 or 15.4 feet from the road, they would also be closer to the road too. So it's not just like this would be the only house on the street that has that type of variance.
Well... I, I think what it comes down to, again, I'm not part of the zoning board or anything like that, I'm just saying, it just comes out to the zoning board to see if it doesn't match the character in that neighborhood. Are you making such an impact that it can actually destroy the character in the neighborhood, or do you think it fits the character in the neighborhood? And it's, and I, you can maybe hold this off and maybe hold a public hearing in the next meeting, just throwing that out there, have a chance where you guys can take, take a drive, take a look at it closely, and then, then to make, make a decision one way or the other. Again, I'm just throwing my two cents out there, get public comment, and take a look at the property yourselves, and see how it fits with the character. Just throwing out that out there.
Yeah, Marco, I was thinking the same thing. I'm not 100% familiar with this property. Uh, I know Travis Avenue is, I'm just not familiar with it. I, I think for me, I like to eyeball it just to see exactly what is being asked and how it impacts the, uh, the neighborhood.
I agree. Yeah, we need to see it.
I, I think that's a good idea.
And, and that's fine. Um, I mean, that, that's fine, and I, and I, and the hope is that when you take, when you see, when you look at it, you will see that there, there's plenty of room there, and that the, the impact minimal at best. But, um, if that is the board's decision, then, fine.
And if I'm correct, Stephanie can add two cents. I understand you will have to hold a public hearing anyway, so it might be a good idea to-
Yeah, we, yeah, and that's normally what the board does, right? They schedule the public hearing, and then they arrange for the applicant, if they want to take a look at, if he wants to be there, and they go together normally, or they go separately.
Well, even on an interpretation? This isn't for a variance. This is just interpreting the code.
No, correct.
So Stephanie, the question is, do you ta- do you have to hold a public hearing for an interpretation? I think that's the question.
You know, we have, we've gone back and forth on that, and I think in my professional opinion, on this one, you'd want a public hearing. Because I think the board needs time to eyeball this and to take a look at the intent of the 30-foot setback, take a look at what you're looking at, take a look at the other four houses that Anthony has, um, referenced, and, and maybe get some public comment. I mean, sometimes we've interpreted, you know, is this use, uh, the same as a barber shop or whatever? And so to hold a public hearing for you guys to decide whether it's similar in use, this is, this isn't, uh, this is a unique application, because there's 15 feet from the property line to a road, and I think taking a look at it would probably be helpful.
That's a, that's a good idea. And Anthony can email the board the other properties that he's talking about, so you can actually then look at those individual properties and compare this one.
They're side by there. The other two properties, he's talking about it to the right, right?
Uh, to the right, yes. Correct, Anthony? Is Anthony still there? Did we lose Anthony? But that, yeah, I think you're absolutely correct.
So I have, this is Marco.
I have no problem.
Go ahead, Chairman.
I, I have no problem asking for a public hearing for next month, uh, and the board to go out there and get an eyeball with, uh, with the property, and the owner could be there or not, it doesn't matter, as long as, you know, as long as we can go take a look at it, and, uh, we could discuss it. I think we need to discuss this because I, I kind of interpret the co- code different than the way, you know, other people might, but again, I'm only one guy, so I have no problem with doing that.
And Stephanie?
Marco, Marco, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Marco Pinkley. Um, and I, I guess another question I have for Anthony, or for someone, most likely Anthony, are there other properties in the village that have something similar to this, where their property line, they set back a, a, a good distance from the, the roadway, and they would require a variance? I just want to see how this affects the, the village in general.
Uh, in speaking with my client, the 222 Travis Avenue also has the same, um, you know, the, the same setback issues, uh, which, which we've looked at.
Marco, and Marco, should I help you? What I can do is, I think Anthony dropped off, which is fine, but I can have Anthony provide other email, uh, other addresses that he said he found. That way you can access, out there on the same street as well, that way you can compare those other houses.
Right. And it wasn't even, you know, Travis Avenue is one good comparison to see other homes there, or other, other areas in the village as well, just to, just to see how any ruling like this could affect the, you know, other properties in the village and what have you.
Yep, oh, I, I got that.
Marco, it's Stephanie. Can I speak?
Go, go, Stephanie.
Marco, we had the same thought, and we did ask Anthony if he could take a look at that, but he said unless he had, you know, deeds to houses or surveys, um, it was really hard to, to sort of know where the property line is compared to the roadway. And/or maybe we can go-
Yeah, and Stephanie, and, and let me add that. Stephanie is absolutely right, because each street is a little different. The right-of-ways can be 15 feet, can be 20 feet, can be 30 feet. So you have to look, you have to get some kind of survey for each street to determine what's the, what's the right-of-way of the road. But the road can be 15 feet, but the right-of-way can be 30 feet, or it can be 20 feet. It's a little different every place else, every place in the village. That's the, that's the difficult part, Marco.
Okay.
Well, we used to use, we used to use rule of thumb for a long time, that from the center of a road, 25 feet either way, and then you would know you, where your, you know, where your setback was. But that's not true in every single road, I know that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct. Um, and my client, I, my client is here, Mr. Calabro, and we're more than happy to provide the village with a, or, you know, Mr. Conti with the, um, survey.
Okay, I think the board definitely needs to discuss this a little more, as Stephanie has suggested and I'm suggesting. And, you know, it won't hurt for the board members to go take a look at it. We have been there before, for when he built the front, um, the front stairs coming down and so forth, so...
And if you look at the survey, you'll see where the, where those stairs fall within those boundary lines as well, and, um, well, you've got the survey, it's self-evident.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, intro, Anthony just came back on. Anthony, can you hear us? Anthony? Oh, I'm sorry, he was just coming back on, wanted to ask that question, but go ahead, go ahead, Chairman.
Uh, okay, now listen, um, I think the board definitely, like I had said, needs to discuss this a little bit, and as Stephanie has indicated. So, I mean, I'm willing to, uh, you know, to go for a, uh, public hearing next month, and we could stop by there and take a look at the property and see what he's talking about. I mean, we've always kind of done it that way for years. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
But that's the way we've basically done it for years. So, any of the board members have anything? Mary, Ed?
No, the only other thing, uh, well, yes, that's true, Gary. Of course, here we are, sitting at our own com- on our own computers. We don't, we always do it, did it, and of course, we just go over to Village Hall, but we don't know yet whether we're going to be able to be in the Village Hall, right?
Yeah, just, just to give everybody an update on that, the, uh, governance executive order expires on September 5th. Uh, but it, it was expiring at the beginning of this month, and he expanded it for another month. So we won't know until probably September 4th if it's going to be expanded for another month. So I'll keep you guys updated, but at this point, um, we are, we're planning to have the meeting at Village Hall unless the executive order is expanded for another month. Or extended, extended, sorry about that.
Right. I mean, we could actually, uh, obviously, we could me- be there where our meeting starts at 7:00, we can be there at 6:00, 6:15, you know, if we have to go back on this, uh, we have, so it lets us get back home and get on, get on Zoom at the appointed time, ob- obviously. So, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, we could work that out.
Uh, my, my hope is we'll be able to be in Village Hall, so we'd be able to-
Yes, me too.
See everything. Even if we have to conform to this, 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 and, and mask, it's no problem for me. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board is, but as long as I got my mask on and I, what you call, I'm pretty okay.
And, and Chairman, we actually, I actually set up the room to set up all the chairs, six, at least six feet apart already, and the audience has been six feet apart, so I actually have the place ready to go as soon as the governor, uh, you know, uh, lists the executive order.
Yeah. Um, I, I'm, uh, this is, this is off topic, but the governor's going to let everybody go back to school. I don't think, I don't think 12 people in that room is going to kill anything.
That's right.
You know? But, uh, anyway, um, if there's no further comments, I'll take the motion to have a public hearing on, uh, Wednesday, September 9th.
I'll make the motion for a, a public hearing for Wednesday, September 9th.
Motion made and seconded. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So 4-0.
So Chairman, let me ask you a question, because I'm new to this too. Would, do you guys meet at the site the night of the meeting, or do you plan to go there on, uh, individually?
Normally, we used to meet a half hour or so before 45 minutes, like Ed, Ed said, and I, I would, I was just going to ask that question, is that still good for us, you guys to do that with your masks on and stuff?
Oh, yeah, it's, I don't think there's a problem. I have no problem with that.
Perfect.
So if I may, all right, so 6:15, uh, September 9th?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll mark it in the calendar.
And, uh, just, uh, quick backup to Rosemary, um, you'll check out those two, uh, those two minutes for us, okay?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You have to tell the applicant about sending out the notices, the public hearing.
Yeah, I was getting to that too. He has to come in and see Anthony, or, or I guess in the village office, and, uh, I think, I think Mr. Calabro has done this once before. He has to send out, uh, return receipt letters and bring the receipts with him.
Right.
To the next meeting.
And, uh, this is Stephanie. I will prepare that, um, notice, and it should be at the village, what day is today? Wednesday? So by Friday morning.
Okay.
I'll have it to give you.
Okay.
You got that, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I got it. Stephanie, can I ask if, uh, maybe you can email a copy of that to me?
Sure.
Okay, one, great. Hold on one second.
And then who's going to mail it? You have to, you have to get the list, David?
Well, we'll take care of that.
Okay, all right.
Where the-
Hold on one second.
Does that have to be from where the building's going in, or from 250 feet from each part of the property line?
The women at the Village Hall will give you a list of the, um, of the addresses that you need to send to.
That's what we need, that's what we're going, okay, you got it. Yeah.
It's 250 from the property.
It's always on the property line.
Property, right. That's what I did last time.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Understood.
Look, can you guys hear me? This is Anthony.
Yes, Anthony.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I have some service issues up here, and I, I was dropped right when Marco asked me a question about if there were any other houses in the village that had similar circumstances.
Right.
And what I want everyone to be aware of in this particular circumstance is that if this was a, a current home that was built in the code, then it would just be a variance, then it would be no different. And the reason why the non-existing, non-conforming lots are heavily scrutinized is because they're narrower, longer lots, and side lot lines were encroached upon as well as front side lot lines. But what's unique about Brian's lot is it is almost a double-wide lot across the front. So even with this proposed, the side lot lines were still a four. Brian, what would your side lot line be even with the vision there?
I forgot the number off the top of my head, but it was like-
30, 30 foot, 30 foot, 30 feet plus with the side lot. So the point is, there's plenty of houses along Craft Lane there that have their homes built less than 30 feet from the home, i.e. the two homes immediately south of him, which have a 17.5-foot variance, the 17. He wouldn't be violating that at all, and the side yard would still be tremendous. So it's like a weird-shaped lot, it's a double-wide. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that when they went out there to take a look at it, to keep in mind that the, the scope of the lot is extreme, that it's not a narrow, deep lot, it's a very wide, deep lot.
Uh, I think Marco's question was more, Anthony, the part that Marco was asking, how many other property? Uh, Anthony, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I think Marco's question, and Marco can correct me if I'm wrong, his question was, how many of the houses have, how that close to the road that if you opened this up, that other people can apply? And I explained to Marco that it'd be difficult to, to determine without a survey on every single road. So unless you have a different answer, that was, that was Marco's question, and Marco's, please correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct. No, that was my question.
Okay, yep, that's it.
So the question still, Anthony, is, uh, am I correct in the, in my answer that it will be difficult to tell unless you got everybody else's survey to tell them, to say how close they are to the road? Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. But if you drive, if you just walk down Travis Road, there's very few houses on Travis right there that have the 30-foot setback. And then if you make it right over there on First Avenue, it's the same as well, because they're all pre-existing non-conforming homes.
Listen, um, you know, there's, there's a large number of houses in this village that don't have the rights, don't have the front yard setback of 30 feet. And I know from before, when I was on the zoning board, we gave a lot of variances out for that because they were already there pre-existing. It wasn't like they made it that way and broke the law. It was there before the law was put in. So, you know, we have quite, quite a few. On my street alone, I had two or three last time when I was, years ago when I was on the board, so...
Yeah, yeah, Gary, my, and, and for everybody here, this is Marco. My concern where, was how many homes are there in a village that have 30 feet because there's an easement in front of them? And what if the village took advantage of that easement and expanded a road or something, and now the homes are closer than 30 feet to the road? That was, that was the, the crux of my question. And I think what Anthony said, that'd be harder to determine.
I can answer that question for you though, Marco.
Many years ago, there was easement there to run a road from, uh, Henry Street by my house through and bring it down there. But the bottom line is, you know, even in, e- even in the world when that was made, today's world, you're going to spend a half a million dollars to do that for four cars a day?[1762.96] It's insane, you know? So that was one of the reasons, and I could be wrong about this, but I'm pretty sure many years ago, the village deeded the easements that they controlled off to the property owners. I'm pretty sure they did that.
1972.
Okay, I didn't know what year it was, but, you know, I wasn't totally involved then, but I know that, I remember that being hashed out and argued about, but again, like for my house to put, I had 25 foot on one side. To put a road there, we're talking about a half a million dollars for three cars, four cars to go on.
So the easement in front of Calabro's house, it's not deeded to Calabro? That is the village easements, it's not deeded to any
Yep, Marco was absolutely correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. But there's, but also the, the road there on Travis Avenue is also fairly wide. I mean, Mr. Calabro in the case, it's anywhere, anywhere approaching 60, 60 feet already. So it's, it's wide, it's already a wide street. Instead of if we're talking about a narrow street, that could, you know, where, where the potential for, you know, expansion, you know, is great. It's just, it's also very
In my opinion, that's, expansion's not going to happen on that street. And, and we're spending taxpayer money to do exactly nothing. The cars get traversed past there very easily.
Correct.
So.
Hey, Gary?
Yes.
Again?
Yep.
If, if you look at the house, that's Brian's number 226, if you look at number 228, apron of his driveway actually molds right into the easement. There would be, that road is, that house is literally five, six feet off the road. If they, if they increased the roadway, he'd lose his driveway.
Listen, that, that's sort of right of him, as you face it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Well, again, that, that house is there. I, I remember when they were built, and, and they, they didn't have to conform to that back then.
That's right.
That was Howard Goldback's house, that, that Brian's in, and the house to the right was also Howard Goldback's house. So.
Anthony, a question came up when we lost you is, you said a couple of other houses that had, close to the road, you named a couple of addresses. If you can email the board those addresses as well, so that way when they drive by, they can take a look at them, okay?
That's a great idea. Before they even drive by, they can pull it up on Google Earth and GIS and look exactly where the property lines are and what the houses look like compared to all the neighbors.
That's, that's true. This is 226, this is 224, and 222 is here.
Okay, is, any other comments? Nothing further.
Nothing else for me.
Stephanie?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
No, make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Rosemary. I, I did mention the date, the 9th, that's right.
That is correct, yes.
Need a motion for the public hearing.
I make a motion for a public hearing on September 9th, 2020.
Mary?
I will second that.
Ed seconded, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes, okay. Thanks, Rosemary. Almost forgot that.
Well, I'm, okay.
Now, that's why you get the big money, honey. I'll drag you off that peanut butter and jelly sandwich tomorrow. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Actually, before we adjourn, Gary, I know you did say we had two matters here, and who's fucking, Mr. Arrasim, what, I know he said he wasn't going to participate, so what was going on?
Yeah, what happened, yeah, what happened is, I, I can answer that. What happened was he, I guess he said that he didn't realize the meeting was tonight. He said he had other arrangements, so I told him the next, that he can attend the next meeting in September. He responded, hopefully you guys saw the emails, he responded with his complaints about his neighbors.
I didn't see any amendment.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get any.
You get emails, okay. So I'm, I'll forward you the emails. So he actually responded, he can't make it. His problem is some of his neighbors. Anthony responded to him today because some of them have violations outstanding, but I'll forward the emails to the board, but he said he was, had, he had something else going on tonight, but I told him he'll be on, on the September meeting.
No problem. Okay, so, so just, well, Anthony, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so his other, his other problems on Catherine Street with the neighbors, are they code addressable or what?
Yes, they are. He's got a legal two family that's behind him, and it's an ongoing property maintenance issue. His property is a little bit higher, their property is a little bit lower. So the way it works is they, I issue a violation, it goes to court. There's no fines ever issued, but a judge mandates, all right, cleaned up, he cleans it up, it's good for a couple of months, a new set of tenants comes in and whatnot. The fact of the matter is, it's just not a privately owned, single-family home, and it's not as nicely kept. And it's a code enforcement nightmare, but I constantly have violations open for.
I'll just have every resident
Now, you, it's your job just to issue them. Don't worry about the court.
Okay. Yeah, no, I've got several violations. I got one right now that matured July 30th, and I, I hate to do it, but I have to generate a appearance ticket for, you know, brush wood, scrap wood on the property. He's got to go to court now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Marcus, for your help.
Thank you, sir.
Are we okay on the motion to adjourn now?
You can do it.
I think we did it already, right?
You did it already.
All right, everybody, good night. I'm going to, I'm going to bring the Zoom meeting down. Thanks, everybody, for your time, and I'll see you next month.
Everybody, thank you for your time.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
You. Bye-bye.
Marco, Marco, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Marco Pinkley. And I guess another question I have for Anthony or for someone, most likely Anthony, are there other properties in the village that have something similar to this, where their property line is set back a, a, a good distance from the, the roadway, and they would require a variance? I just want to see how this affects the, the village in general.
In speaking with my client, the 222 Travis Avenue also has the same, you know, the, the same setback issues, which, which we've looked at.
Marco, and Marco, does that help you? What I can do is, I think Anthony dropped off, which is fine, but I can have Anthony provide other email, other addresses that he said he found. That way you can, I think they're on the same street as well. That way you can compare those other houses.
Right. And it wasn't even, you know, Travis Avenue is one good comparison to see other homes there, or other, other areas in the village as well, just to, just to see how any ruling like this could affect the, you know, other properties in the village and what have you.
Yep.
Marco, it's Stephanie. Can I speak?
Go, go, Stephanie.
Marco, we had the same thought, and we did ask Anthony if he could take a look at that, but he said unless he had, you know, deeds to houses or surveys, it was really hard to, to sort of know where the property line is compared to the roadway. And or maybe we can
Yeah, and Stephanie, and let me add that. Stephanie's absolutely right, because each street is a little different. The right of ways can be 15 feet, can be 20 feet, can be 30 feet. So you have to look, you have to get some kind of survey for each street to determine what's the, what's the right of way of the road, but the road can be 15 feet, but the right of way can be 30 feet, or it can be 20 feet. It's a little different every place else, every place in the village. That's the, that's the difficult part, Marco.
Okay. We used to use, we used to use rule of thumb for a long time, that from the center of a road, 25 feet either way, and then you would know where your, you know, where your setback was, but that's not true in every single road. I know that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct. And my client, my client is here, Mr. Calabro, and we're more than happy to provide the village with a, you know, Mr. Conti with the survey.
Okay, I think the board definitely needs to discuss this a little more, as Stephanie has suggested and I'm suggesting. And, you know, it won't hurt for the board members to go take a look at it. We have been there before for when he built the front, the front stairs coming down and so forth. So.
And if you look at the survey, you'll see where the, where those stairs fall within those boundary lines as well, and, well, you've got the survey, it's self-evident.
I, I'm sorry, intro, Anthony just came back on. Anthony, can you hear us? Anthony? Oh, I'm sorry. He was just coming back on, wanted to ask that question, but go ahead, go ahead, Chairman.
Okay, now, listen, I think the board definitely, like I had said, needs to discuss this a little bit, and as Stephanie has indicated. So, I mean, I'm willing to, you know, to go for a public hearing next month, and we could stop by there and take a look at the property and see what he's talking about. I mean, we've always kind of done it that way for years. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
But that's the way we've basically done it for years. So, any of the board members have anything? Mary, Ed?
No, the only other thing, well, yes, that's true, Gary. Of course, here we are sitting at our own on our own computers. We don't, we always do it, did it, and of course, we just go over to Village Hall, but we don't know yet whether we're going to be able to be in the Village Hall, right?
Yeah, just to give everybody an update on that, the governance executive order expires on September 5th. But it, it was expiring at the beginning of this month, and he expanded it for another month. So we won't know until probably September 4th if it's going to be expanded for another month. So I'll keep you guys updated, but at this point, we are planning to have the meeting at Village Hall unless the executive order is expanded for another month. Or extended, extended, sorry about that.
Right. I mean, we could actually, obviously, we could be there where our meeting starts at 7:00. We can be there at 6:00, 6:15. You know, if we have to go back on this, we have, so it lets us get back home and get on, get on Zoom at the appointed time, obviously. So, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, we could work that out.
My, my hope is we'll be able to be in Village Hall, so we'd be able to
Yes, me too.
See everything, even if we have to conform to this, 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 and, and masks. It's no problem for me. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board is, but as long as I got my mask on and I, what you call, I'm pretty okay.
And Chairman, we actually, I actually set up the room to set up all the chairs, six, at least six feet apart already, and the audience has been six feet apart, so I actually have the place ready to go as soon as the governor, you know, lists the executive order.
Yeah. I, I'm, this is, this is off topic, but the governor's going to let everybody go back to school. I don't think, I don't think 12 people in that room is going to kill anything.
That's right.
You know, but anyway, if there's no further comments, I'll take the motion to have a public hearing on Wednesday, September 9.
I'll make the motion for a public hearing for Wednesday, September 9.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So 4-0.
So Chairman, let me ask you a question because I'm new to this too. Would, do you guys meet at the site the night of the meeting? Or do you plan to go there on individually?
Normally, we used to meet a half hour or so before 45 minutes, like Ed, Ed said, and I, I would, I was just going to ask that question. Is that still good for us, you guys, to do that with your masks on and stuff?
Oh, yeah. It's, I don't think there's a problem. I have no problem with that. Perfect.
So if I may. All right, so 6:15, September 9?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll mark it in the calendar.
Okay. And just a quick backup to Rosemary, you'll check out those two, those two minutes for us, okay?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
You have to tell the applicant about sending out the notices, the public hearing.
Yeah, I was getting to that too. He has to come in and see Anthony or, or I guess in the village office. And I think, I think Mr. Calabro has done this once before. He has to send out the return receipt letters and bring the receipts with him.
Right.
To the next meeting.
And this is Stephanie. I will prepare that notice and it should be at the village. What day is today? Wednesday? So by Friday morning.
Okay.
I'll have it to give you.
Okay.
You got that, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I got it. Stephanie, can I ask if, maybe you can email a copy of that to me?
Sure.
Okay, one, great. Hold on one second.
And then who's going to mail it? You have to, you have to get the list, David?
Well, we'll take care of that.
Okay, all right.
Where the
Hold on one second.
Does that have to be from where the building's going in or from 250 feet from each part of the property line?
The women at the Village Hall will give you a list of the, of the addresses that you need to send to.
That's what we need, that's what we're going, okay, you got it.
Yeah. 250 from the property.
It's always on the property line.
Property, right. That's what I did last time.
Okay, good. Understood.
Look, can you guys hear me? This is Anthony.
Yes, Anthony.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I have some service issues up here and I, I was dropped right when Marco asked me a question about if there were any other houses in the village that had similar circumstances.
Right.
And what I want everyone to be aware of in this particular circumstance is that if this was a, a current home that was built in the code, then it would just be a variance. Then it would be no different. And the reason why the non-existing, not conforming lots are heavily scrutinized is because they're narrower, longer lots, and side lot lines were encroached upon as well as front side lot lines. But what's unique about Brian's lot is it is almost a double wide lot across the front. So even with this proposed, the side lot lines would still afford, Brian, what would your side lot line be even with the vision there?
I forgot the number off the top of my head, but it was like
30 foot, 30 foot, 30 feet plus with the side lot. So the point is, there's plenty of houses along Craft Lane there that have their homes built less than 30 feet from the home, i.e. the two homes immediately south of him, which have a 17.5-foot variance, the 17. He wouldn't be violating that at all, and the side yard would still be tremendous. So it's like a weird shaped lot. It's a double wide. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that when they went out there to take a look at it, to keep in mind that the, the scope of the lot is extremely, it's not a narrow deep lot. It's a very wide, deep lot.
I, I think Marco's question was more, Anthony, the part that Marco was asking, how many other property? Anthony, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I think Marco's question, and Marco can correct me if I'm wrong, Hugh's question was, how many of the houses have, how that close to the road? That if you open this up, that other people can apply, and I explained to Marco that it'd be difficult to determine without a survey on every single road. So unless you have a different answer, that was, that was Marco's question, and Marco, please correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct. No, that was my question. Okay, yep, that's it.
So the question still, Anthony, is, am I correct in the, in my answer that it'll be difficult to tell unless you got everybody else's survey to tell them, to say how close they are to the road? Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. But if you drive, if you just walk down Travis Road, there's very few houses on Travis right there that have the 30-foot setback. And then if you make it right over there on First Avenue, it's the same as well, because they're all pre-existing, non-conforming homes.
Listen, you know, there's, there's a large number of houses in this village that don't have the rights, don't have the front yard setback of 30 feet. And I know from before, when I was on the zoning board, we gave a lot of variances out for that because they were already there pre-existing. It wasn't like they made it that way and broke the law. It was there before the law was put in. So, you know, we have quite, quite a few. On my street alone, I had two or three last time when I was, years ago when I was on the board, so.
Yeah, yeah, Gary, my, and, and for everybody here, this is Marco. My concern where, was how many homes are there in a village that have 30 feet because there's an easement in front of them? And what if the village took advantage of that easement and expanded a road or something, and now the homes are closer than 30 feet to the road? That was, that was the, the crux of my question. And I think what Anthony said, that'd be hard to determine.
I can answer that question for you though, Marco. Many years ago, there was easement there to run a road from Henry Street by my house through and bring it down there. But the bottom line is, you know, even, even in the world when that was made, today's world, you're going to spend a half a million dollars to do that for four cars a day? It's insane, you know? So that was one of the reasons, and I could be wrong about this, but I'm pretty sure many years ago, the village deeded the easements that they controlled off to the property owners. I'm pretty sure they did that.
1972.
Okay, I didn't know what year it was, but, you know, I wasn't totally involved then, but I know that I remember that Okay, I didn't know what year it was, but, uh, you know, I wasn't totally involved then, but I know that, I remember that being hashed out and argued about. But again, like for my house to put, I had twenty-five foot on one side. To put a road there, we're talking about a half a million dollars for three cars, four cars to go on.
So the easement in, the easement in front of Calabro's house, it's not deeded to Calabro? The vill- that is the village easements, it's not deeded any?
Yep, Marco is absolutely correct, yes, that's correct.
Okay. But there's, but also the, the, the road there on, on Travis Avenue is also fairly wide. I mean, Mr. Mr. Calabro indicates it's anywhere, a- a- anywhere approaching six, sixty feet already. So it's, it's wide, i- it's already a wide street. It's not as if we're talking about a narrow street that could, you know, where, where the potential for, you know, expansion, um, you know, is great. It's just, it's also very strict.
In my opinion, that's, expansion's not gonna happen on that street. And, and they were spending taxpayer money to do exactly nothing. The cars get traversed past there very easily.
Correct.
So.
Hey, Gary?
Yes.
Anthony again?
Yep.
If, if you look at the house, that's Brian's number two twenty-six, if you look at number two twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Apron of his driveway actually molds right into the easement. There would be, that road is, that house is literally five, six feet off the road. If they, if they increased the roadway, he'd lose his driveway.
Listen, that, that's sort of right to him, as you face it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, well, again, that, that house is there. I, I remember when they were built, and, and they, they didn't have to conform to that back then.
That's right, that's right.
That was How- Howard Goldback's house, that, that, uh, Brian's and, and the house to the right was also Howard Goldback's house, so.
Uh, Anthony, a question came up when we lost you is, uh, you said a couple of other houses that ha- uh, close to the road, you named a couple of addresses. If you can email the board those addresses as well, so that way, when they drive by, they can take a look at them, okay?
That's a great idea. Before they even drive by, they could pull it up on Google Earth and GIS and look exactly where the property lines are and what the houses look like compared to all the neighbors.
That's, that's freak. This is, I'm two twenty-six, this is two twenty-four, and two twenty-two is here.
Yeah. Okay, is, uh, any other comments?
Nothing further, nothing else for me.
Stephanie?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'll, I'll take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
No, make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Rosemary. I, I did mention the date, the ninth, that, that's right.
That is correct, yes, nine nine.
Need a motion for a public hearing.
I make a motion for a public hearing on September ninth, twenty twenty.
Okay, Mary.
I will second that.
Ed seconds it, okay?
Thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, four ayes, okay.
Right.
Thanks, Rosemary, almost forgot that.
Well, I'm, okay.
No, that's why you get the big money, honey. No doubt about it. I'll drop you off that peanut butter and jelly sandwich tomorrow. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Uh, actually, before we adjourn, Gary, I know you did say, we had two matters here, and, uh, who's fucking? Mr. Arrasim. What, I know he said he wasn't gonna participate, so what was going on?
Yeah, what hap- yeah, what happened is, I, I can answer that. What happened was, he, I guess he said that he didn't realize the meeting was tonight. He said he had other arrangements, so I told him the next, that he could attend the next meeting in September. Uh, he responded, uh, hopefully you guys saw the emails, he responded with his co- his complaints about his neighbors.
I didn't see any amendment.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get any.
You get emails, okay, so I'm, I'll forward you the emails. So he actually responded, he can't make it, his problem is some of his neighbors. Uh, Anthony responded to him today because some of them have violations outstanding, but I'll forward the emails to the board, but he said he was, had, uh, he had something else going on tonight, but I told him he'll be on, on the September meeting.
No problem. Okay, so, so just, well, Anthony, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, his other, uh, his other problems on Catherine Street, um, with the neighbors, are they code addressable or what?
Yes, they are. He's got a, a legal two family that's behind him, and it's an ongoing property maintenance issue. His property's a little bit higher, their property's a little bit lower. So the way it works is they, I issue a violation, it goes to court, there's no fines ever issued, but a judge mandates, all right, clean it up, he cleans it up. It's good for a couple of months, a new set of tenants comes in and whatnot. The fact of the matter is, it's just not a privately owned, single-family home, and it's not as nicely kept. And it's the code enforcement, nice, Mary, but I constantly have violations open for.
Okay. I'll just have every resident.
Uh, you, it's your job just to issue them, don't worry about the court.
Okay, yeah, no, I've got several violations. I got one right now that matured July thirtieth, and I, I, I hate to do it, but I have to generate appearance ticket for, you know, brush wood, scrap wood on the property. He's gotta go to court now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, thank you, Marcus, for your help.
Thank you, sir.
We okay on a motion to adjourn now?
You can do it.
Think we did it already, right?
You did it already.
All right, okay, everybody, good night, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring the Zoom meeting down. Thanks, everybody, for your time, and I'll see you next month.
Everybody, thank you for your time.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
You. Bye-bye.